Good evening, everyone. It is six by my computer, by the clock on my computer, it's 6:31 PM, and we're going to start our meeting. This is the Thomas Scottney School District Board meeting for Monday, November 13th, 2023. And let's see, I've got a couple of changes that we need to be able to hold on. Okay. One change is Davis' form for the Windsor on Air.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
We'll add that at the very end. Davis, if you wouldn't mind just circulating that form around to...
Yes, I will.
And then when we get to it, if you wouldn't mind sharing your screen.
Yeah, I will, I will do that so folks can see it.
And... Okay. I've got a couple of questions, or a question, I don't really know where to put it in. What I'd like to do is add it to the end of your administrative report as a question. That's all right? It has to do with curriculum funding. Just a question. Okay. And, all right, I've taken motion to approve the minutes of October 9th.
So moved. Second, Davis?
Is there any discussion over the minutes of October 9th? Okay.
Not, but it just seems so long ago.
It was, it was. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes of October 9th, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No.
This counts. You said aye, but you didn't mean to. Rebecca, are you voting?
There's Nancy.
Rebecca, she can't hear anything.
Was Rebecca in the question?
Yes. I see your hand, Rebecca. Yes, she's approving the... Okay. Right. And, let's see. Next on the agenda is the board involvement report. The public participation. That's next. Oh, sorry. I thought it was...
Yep, go ahead. I took a tour with Kate of the high school and junior high. I was really not going to school here. It was nice to be able to see it. I also went to the pumpkin chumkin event on Halloween, and that was excellent. And then seeing all of the kids around town after with the, doing the, not chedderman.
Scavenger.
Scavenger hunt, yes. It was very cool. And then watching, then all the little kids came through, like, it was, it was really, I thought, a cool thing to see.
Excellent. One group of students planned that scavenger hunt for the rest of the school.
It was very awesome. It was nice, yeah.
Cool. I was able to go to the Windsor open house, the Windsor School open house. I think that happened after our last meeting. It's been a long time. But, yeah, it was really wonderful. It was great to see such great community involvement. There were a lot of people there. And just, I got to speak to some of our, some of our faculty and, you know, check in with some, some parents and students that I know and a few just getting to know. And, you know, much like the Albert Bridge event, it was just fantastic to see everyone come together. And, and I heard a lot of really positive feedback over the course of that night and then since then reflecting on it with folks about how the year's been kicking off. So that was a really positive event. And then this past, I think it was Tuesday, I was able to get back into my regular drop-in schedule. I was finally able to map out the rest of my year. So I dropped in, had a nice chat with Colleen, got to hang at the middle school lunch and see how things are going. Yeah, it's just good to be, good to be dropping in again. I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing how student groups are going and, you know, getting to know some of our seniors. That was one of my favorite things last year is to hear about plans that students have going into, you know, the next phase of their life. So, yeah, happy to be back.
Excellent. Okay, anybody else?
I went to the ABS open house after lunch. Jennifer struggled with background noise.
Yes.
Yeah. I wanted to stand up and say something, but I decided just to pull away. Anyway, it's, even adults have a hard time realizing that when it's not gym time, gym isn't a gym anymore. And the Disgney Outdoor Halloween thing's fantastic and it was just really great. You know, the volunteers were wonderful.
That was, that really was the best it's been so far.
Yeah. The other thing that was impressive about it was the fact that there were so many people who weren't from West Windsor.
Yeah.
So, just a whole lot of really young, I assume, apartment and Windsor residents.
And Redding.
And Redding, yeah. It's just fantastic. So kudos to them.
And we went to the Veterans Day.
It's really, it's one of my absolute favorite things.
Yes. It is, it's wonderful. Okay. Well, that was interesting. And that did not sound at all like the singing. Wonderful singing of all the, all the grades. And to see all the military people from our town and some people dressed in uniform. And it was, it's very moving. At the end of it, there's a, the whole school sings, "Thank you." Thank you soldiers.
Thank you soldiers.
It is, thank you soldiers. They sing it every year. It's beautiful. It's beautiful. And very, it was wonderful. Thank you guys for coming. In that.
Yeah, I get to hear it in the show.
They love that song and it just is, they're singing right to the soldiers. It's, it was beautiful.
Yeah, I was getting, for some reason, eleven, when I was...
It chokes me up every day.
Every single day.
Yeah.
Small town meant it's best. Okay. Public participation and announcements. First, let me say that public comment is not legally required, but we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns over issues. Through these meetings, our board wants for our students how to conduct public discourse and that the board and members of our community can approach controversial issues in a civil and constructive manner and can demonstrate mutual respect. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed for discussion. Let's see. Are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment? Okay. Here are none. Ready?
Sure.
All right.
Great, well, wonderful. Thank you all. I can kick it off in pre-K Windsor School land. Big ideas for tonight, our parent and student engagement, this is the season for conferences and some community events which we're really excited about. So we'll certainly hear some of that, some of the other great things going on. One of our goals here at Windsor School is tracking and looking to increase our parent, family, caregiver engagement. So at our events thus far this year, we've been keeping track of the number of families that we see. So my first kickoff for the pre-K five side of the building was a super, super awesome conference turnout, the best since I've been here. I know, it's not that long. But we had 90.3% of our families, which is really, really awesome. And a real big shout out to our teachers who did a lot of outreach and partnered with families to make those conferences happen. And we're creative and flexible in scheduling. We know from research that the more we are engaged with our parents and families, the better students do. So really, really great to see that. It's not in my slide, but it occurs to me, we probably have not been together as a board, with the board since open house. And our open house numbers, I think, were 75% of, I can pull that exact number up for you, of our families on the State Street side. This year, as today was a good reminder, winter is on its way. It's chilly today. We are again skiing with the Scottney Outdoors for the State Street side. We're really excited about that. This year, the team is also going to do winter activities for the whole school. So when the skiers are out skiing, much like some of our other schools, we will have a suite of other activities which are being planned on campus and off to get our students outside and enjoying winter as a community. So we're looking forward to that and hoping it snows a lot. Last winter wasn't great for that, but ever hopeful we are. El Niño's on its way. Maker Club, I want to shout out Tracy Kohler. She does this amazing Maker Club on Mondays. That was today, I walked in there very briefly. I don't think anybody noticed me, which is very cool because they were super, super busy. That's a partnership with Dartmouth. If some Dartmouth students come over, teach coding and robotics and all the cool things, and that is offered here, grades three through five. Very, very cool. Looking forward to expanding some of that programming hopefully next year. Morning meetings, we have done every day this year. It's a brief start to our school day as a full community. In line with our Leader in Me program, those meetings are going to be near the end of this month, student-led. So I'm hoping they will still give me a little bit of airtime to do my thing. I've gotten really used to my radio or TV voice. But really, really excited for our students to take the lead and kick off our school day in style. The fifth grades will start that. If any board members would like to zoom in and join us as, maybe make some cameos for those meetings, you're more than welcome to. I have to talk to the students, though, as they'll be running the show. This is also our Assembly Week. We're the first and third. There's a little bit of schedule adjustment because October is a five-week month, but we are on for this coming Friday, 11:17 and 8:15 in the theater. So we're looking forward to, again, celebrating our students and an open invitation to board members if you'd like to join us or to join us. It's a very cool way to engage with our families and students and see what everyone's up to.
Good evening, everyone. What's happening in the sixth through eighth grade at Windsor? We had our second meeting in October with our meet and greet with the middle school team, with our custodians. And then in November, we'll be meeting with some of our cafeteria staff. Just chance for our staff to talk to our kids about why they do what they do, how they are here to support students, and reminding them how we can work together and keep our school clean, safe, respected, and knowing that our custodians are our cafe services, our SRO, our people that our students, a lot of our students lean on and look up to and want them to see another side of those, those folks. This conference, we had 46% attendance of our parents, and we're really excited. We're expecting a lot closer to 100% in the spring when we have parent-led, when we have student-led conferences. And it's also about the same percentage of parents in the middle school who are with us, who look and help us. In the month of November, our students are going to be working on thankfulness and shouting out people they're thankful for. I put a few of them in the newsletter this month. Some of the students mentioning teachers, parents, custodians again. And some of the students wrote that they wanted to be kept anonymous. Some of them wanted me to share their notes of thankfulness with their parents, their families, why they mean so much to them. So I'm going to continue that through the month of November, and we're going to see if our middle school student council wants to take over something regularly for the rest of the year. One of the things our new council worked on first, as we changed clubs for the second quarter, was our first spirit week this week. Today was students dressed like teachers, teachers dressed like students. So I came full gear in all my sweatpants and sweatshirts. And the students, also, one of the other clubs that is occurring now is our Future Teachers Club. And this picture on the bottom left is one of our students who is in that club with Ms. Lawyer and pairing up with some of our elementary students and doing some reading to them. Another leadership interest that is coming up in our survey we did with the students is that I have about 10 students out of 71 who took the survey. Not all advisories got to complete it yet, but about 10 students and said yes, and about 10 more students said maybe, that they are going to join us for a leadership advisory team that is going to talk to our classmates and our younger students about harassment, equity, inclusion, anti-racism topics that they are interested in leading and learning more about. And we're working with Tracy Price to deliver our December, January, and February middle school assemblies. So we're looking forward to all of that. Oh, and lastly, our eighth graders are heading to Hartford this Wednesday for a field trip.
Yes, Rebecca, I see your hand.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Colleen, who is the Future Teachers Club?
Each teacher has a club that they're running, and Ms. Lawyer has this group of students who wants to look at working with children, and she's kind of helping them look at ways to engage with students. And their first meeting was just doing some read-alouds and some buddy reading.
That sounds exciting.
And Colleen, can you talk about, a little bit about the field trip to Hartford?
Yeah, Ms. Richter, our school counselor, has set up an annual trip to Hartford for all of our eighth graders to get a good idea about what they have to offer there, get an understanding of what hands-on learning looks like, get an understanding of what the criteria is to go there, and be hands-on, and get to meet some of the staff there. So we're looking forward to it. We know it's, it's a huge draw for a lot of our students. We know they can't apply until they're 10th graders. But we are working with Kim Gogan to be as flexible with flexible pathways when necessary. But we're just excited to partner with Hartford and let our eighth graders see what they have to offer.
And we're talking about the Hartford Technical School?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yes, Rebecca, I see your hand.
Well, Colleen, I think that that is going to change. I'm, I'm going, I will be attending a meeting at Hartford tomorrow, and they are looking at a program that's going to allow for ninth graders to start there as opposed to waiting until year 10. So I'm really excited to hear about it. And I think that's great to get them in from the eighth grade because they're, they're going to need to be making some of those choices in their scheduling so that they can accommodate those different classes that they would want from Hartford. So I think that's really exciting.
And just to clarify, or for, for my edification, my personal education, and I apologize, but also for the public, when can a student start flexible pathways?
Seventh grade. Although, we have not had many, but we've had one middle school student, Colleen can confirm, that we provided a flexible pathway for, so we're hoping to really grow that.
And so what does it look like for a seventh grade student to...
To get a flexible pathway? We have one student who is going off-site to do some work and learning, I think, three afternoons a week in an area of interest for that student. So it's dependent on the student, but we try to be as flexible as we can to meet the needs and passions of all the kids, so.
So doesn't, so, and just so I understand, does Hartford fit into flexible pathways? I know it's its own thing, but...
Kate, would you say Hartford's a flexible pathway for a student?
No, it's just another option.
And if you're interested, I mean, Kim Gogan will come and do, she typically comes and does a little, a little presentation on flexible pathways. And she did mention this way, she hasn't been in a while, and she'd love to come. The board's open to it.
Okay, let's have her come in next minute. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, Colleen, sorry.
Are you all set, Colleen? Okay, I'm up. I wanted to tell you about our math team, and we hosted that, so it was nice to have a lot of schools visit. Our senior team, which was Jacob Adams, Madison Williams, Naomi Arthur, Madison Lawyer, and Ernie Hodgson, they placed third in their division. And Jacob Adams placed third highest score in the senior division, so great job to our mathletes. We spoke briefly about the trebuchet on Halloween, but that was the product of our IDL class, or IDL pathway, I guess I should say. And the pumpkin went 53 feet. So we had two winners, and they were just, they were mound their winnings, and one donated theirs back, and that trebuchet is going to be stored so they can make modifications and work on it again next year. You may have seen a lot about our sports teams, either online or in the paper. So our football team just won the D3 state championship, which is a three-peat. What?
I said for the third time in a row.
Yep, for the third time in a row. And both our girls' field hockey team and our girls' soccer team went to the state final, which is pretty amazing, given the size of our school, that we could field two teams at the same time that play at that level. And a lot of, a lot of times when I'm standing there watching a newspaper reporter or someone will ask me, you know, why do you think that, why do you think that is? And I think you just sometimes have to look around while you're down at a game of any team, or even if it's home or away. And the amount of Windsor people who don't have a kid playing on that team, whose kids graduated long ago, or his kids aren't even there yet, that come out to support the team and volunteer in some aspect is pretty amazing. And a lot of towns have rec centers, but our rec center is something special. The feeder programs they do and just the care they give to the kids that then follows into our school is something that is unique to our town. I think that's a lot of the reasons our sports teams are successful. On, prior to their championship game, the football team took part in something called Project Impact. And they, each senior on the team went around and spoke to a staff member who had the greatest impact on their career here at Windsor. And I think that that speaks to the fact that our, our kids, even kids as young as mine, are acutely aware of all the adult help and all the community involvement that goes into making lots of things at our school successful. And I think that is a large part of what makes Windsor special. We did send a team to the rolling conference. Excited to say that it was a lot of new faces who went to the conference. I believe it was, in terms of teachers, Jeff Beatty, Kristy Keeney, Tracy Price, I feel like I'm forgetting someone.
Mary, Kim Gogan.
Kim Gogan, and Mary Richter went. And then we had a few sophomores and juniors go. I've got to check in with a couple of them since they've been back, and kind of the overarching theme is that it was nice for them to see what, how flexibility was defined and how it could work in other schools. Hopefully, we'll continue to hear more from that group. Getting to why I went to a training in White River Junction in October, I believe Christine stopped by. And Rachel Rosby, who's our SAP, is taking the lead on that in our school, and she is working with not only the students who went to the conference, but she's going to pull more into the group. And she's already looking into our data, so we hope to have an update on that. In terms of things that are upcoming, this Thursday, we're hosting in Room 10, Social Media and Mental Health, and that is for the parents to come. We'll have guest speakers, we'll also have some Windsor people on staff. Right now, we had about, we put it out to the whole yes queue. We have about 15 parents coming, but we're going to send it out again. We are having an end-of-quarter celebration, which will be led by our student council, and that is the day before Thanksgiving break. And we are also having another fall ball dance, which is the night before Thanksgiving break. So it's nice to see fun things coming back to the school.
Hi, Albert Bridge. We've been focusing on the Leader in Me synergizing concept, which also does our responsive classroom cooperation and our problem-solving version of collaboration. So some big happenings, you guys mentioned the open house already, big success. We had a lot of good turnout, community dinner that was very much appreciated. We had a Veterans Day performance for our veterans, which you guys already mentioned, which is awesome. We had a mountain day, which is a whole day that we go up to the mountain, and kids choose different things to do. And one of our goals in synergizing is really to have more student-led stuff, as it is across our supervisory union. So we're having a lot of students working with other students and teaching other students. So you'll see some of the pictures, just older kids working with younger kids for some of our harvest festival stuff, which I want to invite everybody to on Monday, the 20th, 21st, yeah, 20th. So if you're interested in joining us, 12 to 1, we're going to have Harvest Festival and a community Thanksgiving traditional kind of meal provided by Rodney, that our nurse, who's also our health collaborator, has been working hard with different classes to really make it connected to some things that they were working on in class and the garden stuff.
All right, my turn. There were two items on the agenda under the administrative report that I'm going to report on. The first one is ways we measure success. So we work together as an administrative team, and we...
So we work together as an administrative team and we organize um, the way we measure success according to our goal areas and this, our strategic plan, so I'm gonna, I copied that for you. Um, okay, let's see. Around, now, um, some of these, oh, actually a lot of these are reported out in our um, data reports done by our data and MTSS coordinator, Brittany Preston, she comes twice a year to, oh, here, here's another one for Hudson. She comes twice a year to our SU board meetings and delivers a data report on a lot of the items that are listed within these um, goal areas. There are other ways that we measure success, not all. Data, um, specific data, so we do lots of anecdotal um, collections of how we're doing, what we're doing, how our teams are doing, how many people are on our team. So if there are specific things on this list that you want us to report on, we're happy to do that. And if there are things that you don't see on this list that should be on this list, we would also love to hear, hear that. Yes.
Is anecdotal data the same as uh, like qualitative data?
Yeah, I think it, it's collecting.
So is it, is it uh, going out and collecting, or is it recording what is coming to you?
I think it's both. So um, that's my understanding. We do a lot of, we have a lot of, currently doing a lot of student interviews, right, to talk about how their school experiences, that's what I consider anecdotal data.
Like, like semi-structured kind of?
Yeah, yeah, semi-structured, same questions, different groups, yeah.
What is the data set up beforehand? So it's very structured as opposed to anecdotal, you know, plain structure.
But it's all really good data, you know, what you're looking for, so.
Rebecca, I see your hand.
Thank you. Um, Christine, um, I, I know that there's always been problems getting um, feedback from students once they've graduated and left the school. And I know that lots of efforts have been put into trying to get that data. Has, have, is there any, have you given any thought to maybe putting in seniors' hands an envelope? And asking them to maybe, after they graduate, you know, after they've left Windsor High School, fill this form out and send it back to the school? I, I was just thinking about that and wondering how, how, how can we get their feedback?
I think that's a great idea. I did, I did, as part of my coursework for becoming a principal, I did focus groups with high school students that had graduated from a K8 school to get that kind of information. So I don't, no, we don't have access to the kids after high school once they leave, so it wouldn't be as simple. But I think um, a, a form where we can gather information from them is a great idea. So I'll put it on the list. Yeah, that's it.
What about like a, I mean, a tw- once a semester Google form that all, at least nine, 12 students fill out? And then that data, that's anonymous, that data is looked at and reviewed?
Well, that's kind of what Panorama does.
It does, yeah.
Now, true. But with, but Panorama's through like some company, right? Not through.
Well, we get the data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How soon?
Right away. It's not, it's not like you wait.
Okay. I'm ignoring what I'm saying.
No.
That's a good idea. If there's other data not captured in that survey, we certainly talk about that.
All.
The difficult part is, of course, creating a device and then getting it to find out what you're actually measuring, which is why having someone else do it, make it, is just so much more realistic.
And to also, Panorama's responses are on multiple choice, if I recall, recall. But like.
I think so, I think so.
What about like?
I think.
I think there's some session, yeah, there's some, um, there's the text questions in there to summarize. But like, why isn't there like, a simple suggestion box on the school website?
Good question.
I mean, that can be made in five minutes, um, maybe six.
Yeah.
But.
Sort of a um, online unanimous input.
Where would it go?
On the website.
Who would monitor it?
That's what I mean.
Yeah, that's the question, who would monitor it?
Well, one of us.
I mean, it could be tech link, yeah.
You have a good idea, Davis?
Just kind of a comment on both of these ideas. I think, I think the idea of having, I mean, obviously gathering more qualitative data from, you know, all of our interested parties is a good idea. I, I would be interested in knowing how, you know, for, for the comment box and for um, Rebecca's idea of kind of like a student exit interview, which I think is really fascinating. I'd, I'd be interested to see like, who else has done that maybe, and what, how they've done it? What, did they have like a tool that they've used, or some kind of form that's out there already?
Yeah, we did do a student exit form for students that are leaving our district, not graduating, but leaving. So we do have that in place as part of the, um, when they leave, the part of the process, they're sent an email and hopefully they fill it out.
And where does it go?
It goes to Tina in HR.
For students?
I think she created the form.
And then where does it go?
It would go to the administrative team and we would bring the data to the school board.
Well, I mean, I guess that's part of the thing. My, my question is, so it'd be great to have all these different forms and data collection, but uh, if it's not going anywhere, I mean, if it's, if, if a student is making a suggestion.
Nobody hears it.
And nobody hears it, but, or the wrong person hears it, or it's going to, I mean, does it really need to go to you? Does it have, like, that's a whole process that would need to, if it was on a, on the SU website, then it could be anybody from any school district, when it could, you know, I think there's a lot to work out there. Not to negate the suggestion, but there's a lot more to it than.
We could always start it on a smaller level and have the student council take the lead on that, because that would be something that they would do. The feedback I get from students is that their data collected out, right? By the time we got to the youth risk survey last year, I had to get an ice truck to the school to get. Like, so the data I see is that they don't, they're dated out. But that might be like a suggestion box or a student council might be the way to go.
I think finding the, and that's, I'm glad that you brought that up, Kate, because it is important. Like, you're, you're going to, if you're hitting students in the same spot with similar kinds of forms and ask them questions that are too similar to what you're already getting, you're probably not gonna get the same amount of data back and it probably won't be as qualitatively useful. Maybe it would be worth thinking of something like a needs assessment or like a gap analysis, where you can say like, okay, what, what specifically are we not gathering? Or what, like, who are we not hearing from? And, you know, looking at existing limitations out there and maybe, or if there aren't any, finding a novel way of getting that. You know, I think, I think these are great ideas to brainstorm. If we're gonna get to implementation, we definitely want to think about, you know, make sure that we're not duplicating work on it. And that at the end, we're gonna get something that's actually useful to us. So maybe something to be thinking about moving now, the next point is what, what do we want? What data, what does the data we're already getting look like? And what does it tell us and what are we using it for? And then where are the gaps in that? What, what do we still want to be hearing? What are some needs, some data needs that we have? And then work backwards too, like, okay, how do we get to that? You know, I mean, you can kind of work in both directions, but you don't want to just gather data and then have it used for it. Then you end up with buckets of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, that, just to clarify, Tina doesn't own that form, the administrators do. Right? We share it jointly at this point. So I mean, that's the best place for the data to go, but.
Would those? So would those be for kids, for, so say I live in Weathersfield and transferred from Windsor to Springfield? Would it be for those kids or for kids that live in Windsor but tuitioning out to?
It's for kids that leave, or um, leave our SU to go somewhere else.
Okay.
Maybe want to find out why they're leaving us.
Okay.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe they're going to another district, maybe they're going to be homeschooled, maybe they're, you know, so.
And, and other thing, that as you begin to transfer and develop your proficiency-based graduation assessments, to use that particular topic as a writing prompt. I mean, you're always wanting, to, to, to measure, have a, an authentic measurement of writing, the difficult part is what, what's the content of that written piece gonna be? And a student who's had, you know, three or four, two years at a Windsor school, there's an awful lot of content there that's been offered.
Yeah. Okay, somebody asked the question, ways we are measuring success at the last meeting. I think it was Rebecca, I think, maybe I'm wrong. Was, is there particular data that you, the board feels that we're not gathering that would be useful?
I think ways we are measuring success has been on our, our watch list.
For a while, yeah.
At least two years.
Yes, it is. Long-going conversation, I said. Is there anything in particular that you feel like would be beneficial?
All right. I think the proficiency-based graduation standards would be, you know, if you're gonna put administrative and staff effort into creating, you know, data, that's, that's the main direction that we're going. And that also can trickle down into the lower grades as well, once you have the, uh, the graduation proficiencies laid out and that direction and the assessments in place. Nothing drives instruction more thoroughly than your assessment expectations in, in the later grades.
That's a good point.
Thus, you know, all the damage no child left behind did, so.
Okay. That is helpful. Okay, the next follow-up was HHP, which stands for hazing, harassment and bullying. I'll, I'll write that out there before we post this. Trying not to use acronyms, but forget sometimes. So um, we've contacted some schools, Kate contacted some, Angie contacted some, to find out if other schools were collecting anonymous reports of, of hazing, harassment and bullying. And most don't, some do. But we read in the policy, we're really looking at the policy carefully, and there is a section in here that says, um, "If the school learns of possible hazing, harassment or bullying through other means, for example, if information about hazing, harassment or bullying is received from a third party, such as a witness to an incident or an anonymous letter or telephone call, different factors will affect the school's response." So just in reading that, we felt like we should at least have the option of someone making a report and in the, uh, form that Angie shared with you, I mean, there is a way to not collect email addresses. We were talking today about, you could, then having a, a slot for your name or a slot that says, "I do not want to be identified." So we are thinking of moving forward that way. Tracy's also been doing some investigating of equity tickets, which they do in Burlington, in Essex-Westford, those are the two biggies she's talked to me about, and how these kind of systems go together. So uh, our hope is to have at least the HHP up, system up and running by mid, by the, you know, beginning of the, of the new year. Angie will come back to the board, the SU board, and share where we're at in January. And so, um, that's just a piece of the system. Once, once that's in place, like the reporting mechanism is in place, we still have to figure out, you know, where those reports go, who's assigned as an investigator. And it is taking a lot of resources and bandwidth to do these investigations that are coming up and they're becoming more and more complex. And um, so we, we need to figure that piece of it out. We've talked um, at length about, it's, it's not really best practice to have necessarily the school counselor or the administrator doing the investigation of a student in their school that they know very well, because there's gonna be some bias there, just, you know, not intentional, but that does come up. So we're still um, working through that. So I'm gonna stop talking.
I, I've been watching the um, working group on student protections against harassment, HHP. Which is, I think they've got four meetings left, and that, that's one of the questions that they've really wrestled with, is who?
Yeah.
Who, like, if we are going to change that whole system, who at this, who has to be responsible for it? Or should there be a new person added to a staff? And, and then that adds a financial burden, but also hiring burden? So it, I think it's a question for the agents. It's a question that a lot of people's mind.
I mean, I can tell you that the people doing most of our investigations are saying, either hire me just to do all the investigations or hire somebody else to do them, because you can't do your, you can't do your job.
Right. And as they're on the rise, um, and I'm, I'm just observing these, these meetings, but um, they were saying that uh, it really is actually a full-time job.
Yeah.
You, you could have a one person for a whole supervisory, I mean.
Yeah.
And then they would have, uh, they would be removed from the, you know, they would have one, one step removal, which is good and bad.
Yeah.
But they could also coordinate things and, I don't know.
Do you think it would be of us to wait a little bit until those meetings are completed? Will it give us information on?
No.
No, okay.
I, I would say go ahead, because anything they do, this is just a working group.
Okay.
It's not a, uh, so anything they do is gonna just be written into our report and then it'll have to go through a hole. So it's like two years from anything, actually.
All right, thanks, that's helpful.
I mean, I do know that the Sears reporting requirements are very rigid.
Yeah.
And there is, of course, unknown victim. Every report has to be reported by law, to the Sears report.
Yeah. We do that. Do you do that reporting?
Yeah. I do. And uh, one of the hesitations I have is making, is, you know, the reporting incidents or has to be, has to be in place, but making it too simple to do an anonymous report, you have to think about what extra work you're creating yourself, because people can just, students can just throw in.
Yeah, and it will take your time, right?
But also, you could have the anonymous reporting be, yeah, create a scenario where it's understood that if you file an anonymous report, it may not get told about. I mean, if, this is just a way for, there would be data collection.
You, you'd have to look at the law though, and the Vermont Board expectations on, on uh, reporting. Doesn't, doesn't mean that whether or not it, there has to be a follow-up, but whether or not it has to be reported.
Right.
Yes, Hudson, and then Misty, I see your hand, just hold on.
I wonder if there is a way to like, have, so say it's a Google form, like um, have it like, cause like if you Google something on the school computer, it can flag Health Desk or whatever. Um, I wonder if there's a way to like have it flag the administrative team if it's something like urgent. and it'll filter out the responses that's like, that are stupid. Like, somebody's just putting random stuff in there.
Yeah, I mean, we've got to figure that out, like where it goes, how it gets routed out from, who gets all the reports, and it has to be looked at daily. I mean, there are required time, timed requirements for hazing, harassment and bullying. So, we're working on it, looking at other districts to see what they're doing, trying to figure it out.
Misty, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just had a question on that. Is that for student, on student reporting for like bullying, hazing and all that? Or would students be able to put reports of those on teachers in that system as well?
I would think so. Yeah. That's the idea.
Great.
HHP covers the whole school community. Yeah, and I appreciate you both bringing up some of the issues that could come along with anonymous reporting. The thought on my mind, the kind of the way of phrasing is like, do you have a different kind of qualitative value of reports that are coming anonymously versus, you know, attached to somebody? Because I imagine if you're doing an investigation, one of the most important things you can do is follow up with the person who made the, who initiated it, whereas if it's anonymous, you lose a lot of that.
Yeah.
The quality of that reporting, because it's harder to verify.
And there's also a component of false complaints in there.
Yeah.
You're allowed to respond back if there's false complaints.
Yes, Rebecca, I see your hand.
Thank you. I find Bill's point interesting in that he speaks to, we need to really pay attention to the law, because whatever comes through there, we then are responsible for responding to it. And so, I think that that piece that, you know, we need, we need to really understand the law. If we have the responsibility to report at that point, if something comes up. And so, I just think that it's just important to first get clarification from the legal folks on how, you know, how to respond to, would we respond to these different various scenarios?
But if you, if you received a, as it is right now, if you received a complaint from Jennifer or Mrs. Aldridge, or Sergio, if you received a complaint from a third party saying, "Student X did Y to student Z," what is your obligation? Do you automatically, do you automatically investigate? Or do you wait for the student to?
No, you don't automatically investigate. If it has, if the behavior might be a violation of the hazing, harassment and bullying policy, you have one day, 24 hours essentially, to make a determination about whether or not you're going to investigate. So, what you do during that time, if you think it might be in that category, you don't actually start interviewing students. You can't. You have to personally notify parents that that's going to happen and the student that that's happening. So, in that time period, you can do things like go observe the classroom and see like, am I seeing those two students interacting in a positive or negative way? Or you can do some observational things. You might even look at your school data. So, you might go back and look at reports that you might have. You also might talk to teachers, right? So, you can gather that kind of general information. But you can't start interviewing students until you determine whether or not you might have a possible violation. And once you determine you might have a possible violation, then you have to send letters out, and then you start interviewing students.
Letters advise everyone of their rights under the policies.
Right.
And spell out how the process is supposed to work.
What would the difference be if it was anonymous? It sounds like, since you're not going to the person right off.
Right. So, what if you were going to say, let's say, I got an anonymous tip that says so-and-so is being mean to so-and-so, and it's happening over and over, and we think it's bullying. First thing you would do is like probably go investigate that space, if that makes sense, right? So, if they're out of recess, somebody's out there with eyes on to kind of get a sense like, are those two having a positive or negative interaction, right? And so, if you think, based on your observations and talking with other people, that there might be an actual violation, then you have to inform those two parents, right? The one who is the victim, the one who would be the perpetrator.
So, if it was a third party, going back to Elizabeth's question, the third party puts their name in, they tell you who they are, you never actually go back to them, it sounds like.
You would.
You would, okay.
If you determine you're going to open up an investigation. If you determine it doesn't, that it's not going to meet any of the violation of the policies, then you can do that with a normal discipline approach. So, you would, at that point, be asking students general information.
Also taking into consideration confidentiality. So, if a community member who has two students reports that they see something, we can't go then go back to that community member and say, "This is what happened with student X and Y, and these are the things that we did." We have to make sure that we're keeping square about all sorts.
Sounds like there's already a little bit of like anonymity in the process. Like, having something that's anonymous isn't too far from the way you have to handle things.
The way we have to ask questions allows it to be not, you don't know, you shouldn't know unless we can stop, who asked or who made the initial report. The way we ask the questions is designed specifically that way.
The court clarified out there, there is a distinct difference between an anonymous report and a confidential report.
Yeah.
Right. Yes.
Because you lose the ability in the step where you would go back and talk to the person who made the report, if it's an anonymous report, you don't have that option. You're kind of missing that foundational step of the whole process.
Which is relationship and community building, too. So, if we're not, not having the chance to do that, that represents challenges.
So, my background is older adults, and I'm just thinking like APS. Like, I would hate someone not to put in a report just because they had to put their name down on the paper. So, for me, I'm struggling with that piece. Like, it feels to me that there's a reason, like, I hear you when you say it might be more, a little more work, but for me, that, for the better good, the work can, we'll figure it out, like, kind of thing. I think that I just would hate to lose something because of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting to cut down on reporting. It's just, I can't remember the requirements for reporting, whether or not you have to report something that has been reported or something that has been reported and determined to be investigated.
For Sears?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if it was reported, but you did not determine that it needed to be investigated, that does not go in. It's only if you opened up an investigation whether or not it was found a violation or not found a violation.
And that's the problem, is that we're not collecting that data. And we, I mean, there's the validated and collected data, there's the, you know, the, what do you call it? Sorry. And then there's the data that remains uncollected, that is still really valuable, and it's kind of in the gray area.
Right. So, in the predetermination form, right? You have to, if you get anything that, anybody could worry that that might be, you do a predetermination form, an intake form. And so, that goes in a file, that goes in the front of our files as well. It's just not reported to Sears, but we do have, I mean, we keep a paper copy of it.
For everything that's reported.
For everything that is reported that may, that, that even those that we do not pursue for an investigation, those all have an intake form.
What platform are you using to collect the behavior data? Swiss?
No.
MBA. But I also think that, you know, the actual reporting is a really intimidating process for a lot of kids. And it works.
I mean, for so many, for all of these reasons, it would be great for them to be able to tell somebody without going through the recording.
It would be interesting to me if they were just able, if there was just a form that they could fill out, that they could write it, even if it wasn't anonymous. Because a lot of it is having to talk about it, having to say it out loud, not, it would just be interesting. I think if we start, I think a forum where people could write it down, or if they could email it, would be better. A lot of times, I open an HHP just because I ask the kid how everything was going. And they're like, "I'm glad you asked."
Yeah.
So, what Angie is sharing at the January 22nd meeting, that is the reporting mechanism that is not anonymous. Is that correct, or does it have an anonymous form?
At first, it was not going to, but we've been thinking about it and investigating, and we feel like we should at least see how it goes, right?
Okay.
I mean, so you can, I mean, we talked about today, having a spot for your name, but also having a spot that says, you know, "I don't want to give you my name," or even a spot that says, "Keep my name confidential," you know, those options for people.
Yep.
So, that's where we're at.
I wonder if it might be valuable at that meeting, just to do a quick review of whatever non-retaliation policy HHP has, because I know that those two things a lot of time go hand-in-hand with people have. You know, whether it's students or, you know, anybody in the school community have reservations about reporting. A lot of it has to do with fear of retaliation.
Yeah, but it's right in the box.
It's in the letter. Students have their books. Fantastic. It's part of the.
Yeah. And you tell, you tell the kids.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah. That's all I have for tonight. That concludes the administrative report.
Let me ask you my question. May I ask you my question? Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to, go ahead, Rebecca.
Thank you. A couple of things. I'm glad that we are, Cassine, going with the opportunity to see, you know, how this, you know, with the anonymous option in place. What I, what I think is, can also, and maybe, I don't know how that would happen, because this is such a, an important piece for our students. I wonder if there's a way of making disinformation available to parents and community members, kind of like letting them know, "We're grappling with this, and these are the reasons why we're grappling with it," and sort of bringing them into the conversation. Because I think, as Kate mentioned earlier, it's an opportunity for them to say it. And if parents are like, think, you know, are aware that the kids want to say something, and they're, they're an op, you know, it's an opportunity to say it at home, but there's also an opportunity to say it at the school.
Yeah, I could do, I could do my question in the last.
An effort that would be led not only by the school, but also by the community and by parents.
And it also, you know, because, I mean, I think when we, when we talk about school atmosphere or culture, and we are only basing the propensity towards hazing, harassment and bullying on reported data, then we are, we all know that we are missing out on a lot. And, and just like Misty, I mean, we know that there are incidents that occur, and, and they point to different pockets of our, our school cultures that we're not acknowledging and we really need to acknowledge.
Yeah, one of the things that we do have with the data collection that we have now is you actually link it to students that are involved. So, we will, for example, if I have an incident come in in the computer system, it will tell me who is involved, and I can go back and see like, this is a pattern that is happening between these students. So, it doesn't have to be reported by a student, because when we look at those, we are looking at that kind of data in case it is seeing some kind of pattern of that. So, we as adults are also looking at that.
Excellent. Good. And now, I just wish there was a way to collect it blind so that we could see it.
Right. Know how far that data goes back.
So, it depends on when people started inputting it into the power school system, and now we're moving up to eduplaning, I'm not sure how that's going to look. But for us, it's the last two years. For, in the computer system, and we still have all paper copies prior to that.
So, all HHP stuff has to be on paper legally? And?
I don't know if that's the case. No, I don't think it's, it just has to be collected and kept. So, I think what she was saying was, we used to do it on paper, but.
Yeah, and it's just general incident reports were on paper.
Yeah. And now it's difficult.
Okay, here's my question. This came up during a parent-teacher conference.
Yeah.
And I asked the teacher to hold off on it, because we were in a parent-teacher conference, and I didn't want to go there. But they were talking about a, and I don't know, but some sort of IO system that they were using in math, that they're no longer using, but was allowed, enabled students to be able to use their computer rather than writing a problem out. And they said that this system, whatever it was called, had been removed as part of the curriculum, but they still, they papered it out of their own pockets. So, my question is, is there, I don't, I wasn't even taking notes during these meetings, I apologize. But the question is, if enough teachers want to be able to use a product that enriches their teaching, how do they go about getting our board to approve it in the budget?
So, Angie is in charge of all education-related software, and she puts surveys up to the staff annually, like, what are you using? She collects data on it, how many teachers are using it. So, when there's enough teachers that really feel strongly about something, she'll put it in her software budget, which the SU approves at the SU board meeting. So, she's been doing that for the past, I want to say, three or four years. It used to be tech that managed all that, which didn't seem appropriate, because a lot of it's educational use. So, she tracks that. I think right now, if there is something that a teacher wants to use, but it's not on her list, I think it is a building-based decision, some staff use their own supply money to purchase something that they want to use. So, I don't think I answered your question, but I will certainly look into it. I mean, she does collect the data regularly about what people are using for software. Some of it is you, I mean, if it's a tool to enhance the curriculum, that's great. If it's a tool that doesn't align with the curriculum, that's another, you know, thing to talk about. It sounds like this was a tool for students.
Yeah, it sounded like it was a tool.
And you think it was called IO?
I don't know. I'll find out.
Okay, yeah.
I'll find out.
Yeah, that would be good, and then you can.
But I just was wondering what the process was. That was my first, yeah, that was my first question. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things to be careful is that with curriculum software, is that there's some really good products out there, and there's a lot more crap.
Yeah, but this sounded like something they had used for some time.
Yeah.
And that it was discontinued, but that it helps them to the degree that they want to still use it, so they're paying out on it.
And you said it allowed teachers to write problems in their own words?
It allowed students to be able to use a computer instead of writing a problem out, but it's not necessarily limited to math.
Okay.
I'll find out more.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But I just wanted to, I just, I really just wanted to start with the process, and then I, we can take it on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Next is, enjoy, what time are we at? Enjoy your sandwich update. We haven't had a meeting since then.
No.
I wonder if it's felt like so long.
It's when November started, there's all our stuff.
Yeah, right, right. So how do we think that it went? It sounded like it was, or...
What's the matter?
Nothing. How do you think it went?
I think it went okay. I think, I think it went okay. I think that it would be, like, I'm reflecting it for myself, of being, it's hard to ask people to come out on a weekend. It's hard to ask people to come and do, like, how can we instead, like, embed ourselves in things that are already happening? Like Rebecca wanting to do the community meal and things like that. Like, I wonder if that would be more productive than us trying to get people to come to us for something. But that's just my thought.
I think it was a great party for the school board. We had the, the school board staff, I mean, school board spouses and children, chat with them. Certain younger teenage were really interesting. I mean, just really, really interesting, and I found they're really fascinating. They were just fantastic individuals to be entertained by. And I'm sure you all know who I'm talking about. Kudos. See you.
We did have families come out too, for a discount. There was some families that did come out, and that was really lovely to see them.
You made a couple of high graders come in.
Yes.
One high grad, they, they, they really enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was a nice guy.
I mean, I don't know if there's a way that you could click it more towards parents and students to come, make it more child-centered, and that might help.
And one parent told me that she didn't know that her family was, the children were invited.
Right, yeah.
So.
Maybe in the choir, we can say, family is welcome.
Yep.
Family meant.
So do we want to do it again? Or do we want, I, I'm, I am basing the whole, I wasn't there. You have to be forthright about what you, whether you want to do it again, because I don't.
Well, I think we were all disappointed that there weren't more people.
I think thinking back on something might be a better idea, or if it has to be, if you want to take this experience as a stepping stone and build on it, I think there's potential there.
I think it definitely demonstrated the ability of the individual members of this board to put that together. I think, I'm in agreement. I want to, I would like to do something like it again. I think that when we think about the when, the where, the kind of connection, connecting it to another event, I think that, that rings true to me, too. And I mean, everyone who showed up, you know, we had a lovely time, we had some great conversations. You know, I got to, there were folks who came from Windsor School, Albert Bridge. It was a small number, but we did have some folks come by, and we had some other community leaders drop by. But I think, I think if we really want to, if the goal of it is to facilitate that kind of, like, not, communication that isn't this, right, that we're not talking about, you know, curriculum, and we're not talking about, like, you know, strategic planning, we're just kind of getting together and socializing, I think that it might behoove us to go where people are at already, and maybe say, hey, like, you know, there's like a big home football game happening, and like, the board's going to come and like, make sandwiches, and like, we're going to facilitate some kind of hangout and communication around that, just, or, you know, a concert that's happening, or a play, or...
Maybe we take the rank of the concession stand at a basketball game.
Yeah, maybe something, something like that. I think, I think bringing that, bringing that environment, I think we did a really nice job creating that environment. I think that we ask getting people out on a weekend to come to somewhere that's kind of further away would be, with the only sell being like, you get to hang out with the board, like, and I know we're wonderful, exciting people. But yeah, if it tied into something else, we would, I think we would achieve what we really set out to, to do.
Okay. Then Rebecca has her hand. Oh, sorry. Rebecca, I see your hand.
Thank you. I really enjoyed it very much. One person that, that stopped by said, so we can talk about anything that we want to talk about. It doesn't have to do anything with school. And I said, right. She said, that's great. And I think it was an opportunity for the board to, to just be in community. And, and I think that's really, and I like the idea of embedding ourselves in other environments and in other situations. But I really, I thought it was, it was special in that the board chose to be in community, in community with each other, in community with whoever showed up. I really, it's an opportunity to just really talk about community, talk about whatever came to your mind. And so I think maybe we should consider doing it once a year. Because the first time we did it, we wanted more people, we had a lot of food. I mean, that was delicious food, too. I, I think, I'd love to do it again, but, yeah. And in addition to, as others mentioned, embedding ourselves in environments that, that our school community are engaged in.
Maybe we do both. I mean, because I, I think Rebecca brings a good point up here, too, is that, you know, the, the kind of trial run of something, like the pilot of it, you may not get the kind of recognition. It could just take time to build that up as a thing.
That was, number one, that was our practice waffle.
Yes.
I mean, but, but also, if we embed ourselves in other things, A, we should be doing that anyway, but B, that's not the same as not having an, an agenda. That's a, that's a, meet your school board members. I don't, I mean, I, like at a basketball game, for example, you're not going to be able to have any kind of conversation with somebody at all.
A lot.
Or a football game, although I have had conversations at football games. But people are there really to watch the football game, or to be at the event. Even if we had a concession stand at, at a, you know, before a play or a concert or something, still not the same, because people are coming in and they're really, do you know what I mean?
I mean, there are some events we just maybe, but you bring up, for example, announce that some board members are going to be at night's game, and then, you know, then that's a less organized place if you didn't have competition. But that could happen anyway. So yeah, I don't necessarily want to say we're going to lose that. I think it's something to build on. The place was fantastic.
If I, like, cutting out the part of you guys making the delicious sandwiches, was it, because I don't, I mean, I hope we, surely didn't expect a lot of people to come to the first one.
Yeah.
No, no.
I think.
Good example of the board working together.
Yeah.
It was really, really, yeah, was amazing.
I, I think it's worth doing. To be honest, I think it's worth doing again. It depends on, like, I think there are things that we can hone a little bit. I think, one bit of feedback I did hear from a lot of people, and as much as I love Warren Zevon, the name of the event confused people. That was something, they were like, was the sandwich part, like, what's going on? Like, I, you know, it's like a.
No one knew who Warren Zevon was.
Yeah.
That just confused my wife completely. And she's like, what's a Warren Zevon? Is that a type of sandwich?
At the end of the day, too, though, like, if we're doing this once or twice a year, spaced out, it's, it's not a huge lift for us to do it. Like, it's not an incredibly arduous task to pull off. But at the end of the day, if, if we get together and do a little, like, small potluck, and get to hang out, and explicitly not talk about board things, it's like, not the worst thing in the world. So, yeah, you know. I, I agree. I think that, I think you're right. We should be doing that community engagement stuff anyway. So I, I hope we find that opportunity to do the community dinner, or like, help run a concession stand, or like, it'd be fantastic to have those opportunities. But, you know, once, twice a year, if there's anything, we're not losing any value by doing events like that. And it might just take times where people be like, oh, we can show up and hang, and, you know, just enjoy ourselves. Sandwiches are great, too. We can keep the sandwiches in the event, just change the title.
Yeah. All right, let's, thank you for, for your pander and all that. Resignations.
I have one.
We have one or more than one?
These are the ones from last.
They're, they're not all this, not some SU left, though, that, the last time.
I'm trying to remember. From, some resignations will come at the SU meeting, because they are SU employees, yes. Is that what you mean, Hudson?
That's true.
Yeah. So this one came yesterday.
Yeah, this morning.
We, we received it this morning. I'm happy to do, because I need to be right out loud. Go ahead. I mean, it's one sentence long.
Very short, yep. Date is November 12, 2023. To whom it may concern, I, Adam Justice, am resigning from my position as physical education teacher and place-based education teacher at Albert Bridge School effective November 21, 2023. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. So, so do we, we don't have to, we don't have to approve?
Yes, we do.
I think you do.
We have to release a reference contract.
Yeah, we do.
And it's because he wants to take another job in another part of our supervisory?
My understanding is that he's looking for a better fit for him.
So he's leaving this one first?
I'm just resigning this one before he can sign a contract elsewhere.
Before he can apply for any other positions.
Yeah.
Any thoughts, anybody?
What, what does that do for, I, I, I just think that sounds, sounds very disruptive, you know, for the, for the school? And I'm just wondering, how do, how do we support the school and the principal in a situation like this? And we know, all of a sudden, we're throwing them in a whirlwind, because they now have to find someone, they, you know, the kids need to now readjust to a whole new person, and, and they may, you may not find someone to pull teachers out of other classrooms. And it just sounds very disruptive. And I don't, I don't know, I don't have the answer, but how do, how do we respond to that, to an educator, and work this out, so that our priority is to provide an environment where students can learn, where there is consistency, where there is reliability? But I don't know, you know? But that's what comes to my mind, when all of a sudden I hear, you know, we are in November, where students are accustomed to a teacher. I know that the school is strapped for teachers as it is, and I don't know, maybe that's not a big problem at ABS.
Well, I think it's what Jennifer considered. She met with her staff today.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, things happen for all kinds of reasons, and, you know, it's not us heartland without a PE teacher, right? If that's the way they go, right, something like that. I think, you know, when you've got a team, they can figure it out, right? We can be creative in our problem solving. We can work together to come up with how to support the immediate challenges. And I think we can make a plan for that. And then the other challenge is, of course, the long-range challenge of, you know, you've got only so many days that you're really allowed to have, like, a substitute that's not certified teaching, particularly something like PE that is a state requirement. So that's a challenge that we're trying to mitigate as much as possible. But, you know, somebody's going to be looking for a PE teacher, one way or the other, I think. We'll figure it out.
So the reality is, though, you've got certain steps, and certain expectations is a contract. And it's pretty common to have teachers have really serious situations in their lives, that you, you know that you have to take into consideration. For example, a spouse gets a job in another part of the country, and it's an opportunity for this person to go. And as reasonable people, you have to say, that's big life change. Or they have a really sick spouse, or a sick child, and they just can't go on with that. Those are situations where you can rationally know that you, you need to release them from the contract. This doesn't feel to me like it's one of those situations. It's, as a teacher, you'd sign a contract and finish the school of your career. That's just what you do. And we are not obligated to approve this resignation in any shape or form. And it puts it in a difficult situation for a teacher, because, you know, not really a difficult situation. The only thing to live is, is you can't accept a job in the state of Vermont. That's what it does.
What happens if we don't release someone from their contract?
Then they can quit, and they can't become, they can't take another teaching position in the state of Vermont.
Until your contract is finished out.
I'm not quite so sure. I don't think you can ever, yeah.
Ever.
You broke a contract in the state of Vermont. And so that's, I think the steps they could take, but I'm not sure what the long-term consequences are. It's...
I feel that if someone feels that he's been there for quite a while, and he's a wonderful person, and if he feels that this is not the right fit, I would let him find what he needs.
I disagree.
I can tell.
Yeah.
But I would never want to keep the state of Vermont from having such a wonderful person in another, in another school.
But that's why it's a place. You don't break a contract. You signed a contract. It's only for a year. And so.
But I can't imagine, there's far more than we, than we know from this little.
Exactly. But I'm, I'm, I'm coming in from the position of a teaching profession, that you just don't do that. You don't, you don't quit in the middle of a year, because it's not the right fit. You just, you, you, you finish the year, and then you find another position.
Ideally, that would be wonderful, right?
Does anybody else have comments? If not, I'm going to invite Misty to make her comment.
I'm just commenting as a, as a parent, that my only concern, listening to, I have no idea what's going on. I'm so out of loop. And I'm only really here because I'm trying to stay up to date with Windsor. I have two girls. I have two girls that have to make high school choice in a couple of years. I'm just trying to stay involved. But my first thought, listening to this conversation, and I have no idea the full context of what's happening, but if a teacher's asking to exit a position, I would totally back that up because if you don't and they stay there for all the wrong reasons, the only people that are going to pay the price are the kids. You want teachers that are a hundred percent committed to what they're doing. And by not releasing that teacher, you're ultimately forcing them to stay where they don't want to be. And I worry that the only ones that are going to be hurt in that situation are kids. And just as a parent, that's, I just felt like I wanted to tell you that because that's where my brain went, like, oh, you, if I was being forced to stay in the job and I felt like I could better myself and go somewhere, but my boss said, oh, you can't go there. You have to stay. Am I going to give a hundred percent service to the people that I'm representing? You know, I worked for DCF and I feel like that's an important role, but if I was forced to stay there, am I going to give my families and kids the best service? Just my point of view, uh, just a thought I had listening to this conversation. And anyway, sorry, I talk a lot. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that, Misty. Rebecca, I see your hand.
You know, I, I was really concerned at the beginning of the year, um, when you, you know, to have people that, um, after a short amount of time, um, no longer feel that they can fulfill their contract. As Bill mentioned, it is a contract. And, um, and, and I think that, um, it really is important to be able to honor that. And I, I really look at, um, the cost of that not being honored. And Jennifer, I, I know that you pull it together and I know you will provide for those kids, but they, look at how the burden shifts. You know, suddenly there is this shift in burden at a time when, um, our schools are really stretched. And it's great. That's what I've been hearing for years in this, in this, um, environment, that the teachers just pull together and they take care of business and they do it well. I mean, Windsor didn't have a high school council, um, for several years until, until recently. I, I just think, though, that, um, I think that there is something to be said when you sign a contract. You, you need to understand that that's a responsibility. And it's a responsibility to many people in the environment. You know, and, and I, I know, Jennifer, I know you'll pull it together and I know the students, I've heard from parents in the school, they always get what they need, but, um, it, it just really, um, has a ripple effect on everyone, including the kids, one way or the other.
Okay.
Yes, Doug?
I think one of my concerns is, it is not just this individual situation. It's what sort of message are we sending to the rest of the staff? You know, that we're going to grant any request to break the contract. And the fact is, if there's a special ed teacher, for example, that then wants to go to, um, pan on it because they can get an extra $30,000 for the year, which is a pretty realistic probability of, of a salary. You know, that we're.
What's the point of having a contract?
What's the point of having a contract if it's a revolving?
I think it's hard for me to feel like I'm making an informed decision because there is so little information presented here. You know, because I hear what you're saying. We, we release people from contracts when these major life events have come up. When there, when there is an antecedent that it's like, okay, like I understand why this is happening. There, I, I, I don't know. I, like, I.
But we've already set a precedent this year because we have released people for, we released several.
Wait, did we not, are we voting on those tonight?
We are.
Okay.
We, we, we brought them up at the end of the last meeting, but they're.
But they're already gone.
But they're gone. They've quit. They, they would not have stayed either way.
Right. And so, right. You know, for example, there's, there's, there's staff, there's, there's staff. Much of the staff is, um, at will.
Yeah.
Okay. So they don't sign contracts.
Oh, these people weren't at will. This, this was a teacher, two teachers, two teachers.
Right. And I think to, to, to answer to, to Misty's concern, which isn't an honest concern, we're not forcing this teacher to stay. He can leave. There's nothing stopping him. But are we going to ignore the, the contract responsibility and ignore the fact that, he signed a contract and the only consequence is he can't get a job as an educator in the state of Vermont? Doesn't mean he can't go teach someplace else other than Vermont. Doesn't mean he can't go do something else. And I'm just concerned about the lack of information in this resignation, and it being really abrupt and coming to halfway through the school year, saying, sure, go ahead. I, I'm comfortable with it.
Is there a way to seek more information on this? I mean, I, I guess that's kind of where I'm at, like, because I just don't. Well, it's not, it's not.
Now, we're dealing with personnel. It shouldn't be a public.
We can't go in for personnel. We learned that.
We can go in for contracts, labor relation agreements with employees, arbitration mediation grievances. And the rest of these don't really fit the definition. I mean, I'm looking, does contracts, is released from a contract, fall under contracts?
It does.
If you want to go, go into executive session to discuss it further. I would say it does.
You're probably sure the start of this is an executive session.
Well, but normally we don't, we do resignations in a public session. So we can certainly do that. Um, the other two, they're, they're gone, but I certainly, one is a high school teacher that we talked about last month, Chris Rivette, who loves the profession. And, um, Jennifer.
Thompson.
Thompson was a new hire. So the other person is an SU employee Katie will bring to the SU meeting in, at the end of this month. So it's a formality, but I think if we're talking about setting a precedent, we might want to just take a formal vote on whether we let those people out of their contracts or not. And if you need more information, we can talk about those in the executive session.
And is it, so the consequence of not being released from your contract and, and quitting is that you get, like, is that?
I don't know that that's in statute. I'm looking at bill gone.
See, that's, yeah, I wanted.
Professional courtesy from one superintendent to the next. I'm pretty positive that another superintendent can, can hire someone who did that, but it's.
There's some re, there might also be some recertification consequences. I'm, I'm not sure about it.
Yeah, I guess I, I would want to actually know what the recourse was too, because, right, I, I feel like we're, we're sort of saying a bunch of stuff that's not.
I haven't seen it in statute. I know that. There are, there are conversations between superintendents.
Yeah. And they're pretty, many of them I've talked to are pretty strict about, even from state to state, they have to.
I mean, it makes, it makes things really challenging, as, you know, discussed. But on the other hand, do you want somebody in your building that doesn't want to be there either for whatever reason?
Oh, yeah. I certainly don't want to create pressure to keep, you know, and to Misty's point, if somebody doesn't want to be somebody or they're working with our community's children, like, yeah, I, I'm just as happy to see them be somewhere else, but I also understand that we are talking about, you know, if you have signed a contract and it says I'm going to be here for this amount of time and it's, you're disrupting that ecosystem when you leave. Again, I, I at least want to know what the recourse is either way definitively, because right now I don't really understand definitively what the differences, because to me too, yeah, superintendents talk. If somebody gets released, but it was, I mean, assuming superintendents talk then too, right? Like, you know?
The difference between someone who's been released from their.
Yeah.
Personal example, okay? So I, um, was teaching in Newport and I got headhunted during the summer from, by Hartford. And so I had to write this superintendent and ask to be released. It was granted because I was way top of pay scale. It was summer.
It was summer, too.
It was summer, too. Yeah. But I had still signed a contract. And so there's, there's one of the things that all happened is that the fact that most teaching jobs become available late spring and early summer. And, um, we, the contract cycle is really, really early. And so if a teacher signs a contract and asks to be released before the end of the school year, I have no problem really releasing him from that contract because the new school year doesn't start again. Because most of the time they have, oh, I've changed. They, they realized it.
Yeah.
But still, it's not in the middle of the school year. I would never break a contract in the middle of the school year. Wouldn't even consider.
Unless there was one of these sort of, again, we don't, we don't have a memo or a tool or anything, but I think that it's that sort of, like a qualifying life event kind of thing, right?
Yeah. I mean, if I lost both my legs and my arms, probably wouldn't finish, but other than that, I wouldn't break it.
Well, I don't know if we're going to use the full year status.
Yeah, you're not going to use the full year status.
Going into himself, finish his contract.
Really, I, yeah, there really is nothing.
If we're talking about contracts and there's more depth of information on this and we can't talk about it in the executive session, I think that'd be valuable for me because I, again, this is extremely scant, um, and it's, yeah, it's hard for me to really.
Yep. Okay, then why don't, um, why don't we, uh, quickly talk about the next agenda?
Yeah, right.
And then we'll go into this executive session and then we'll hold on the game.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
So. So one thing I was hoping that we could do for our next meeting is, um, can we get a report on the middle school model and how it's going and, but the, how the collaboration between the schools is going?
Yeah, so budget.
And budget and.
And technical pathways.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, we, we did have the Windsor on air that quick thing.
Oh, the Windsor on air.
Before we.
Yes, thank you. And do we have the ABS leader in me thing also?
Thanks, Sarah.
Yes. Yeah, the student presentation. Yeah.
I wondered, is it okay? If, this is kind of a question for Sergio, but if it would be possible to have, like, I know the curriculum is at the SU level, but I think it would be helpful to hear how the curriculum is going at this level. So if we could have that knowledge in those meetings too.
Sure. What specifically would you be looking for?
Just with the new curriculum, um.
Like an update on implementation.
Yeah, and how it's going in Windsor.
Yeah, that would be fantastic if you can get a teacher to present it.
That would be.
Well, probably what I would ask, and we're out there in cyberspace right now, is, would probably be our, to see if our intervention slash instructional coach team could talk, because they're the ones who are supporting the implementation of their teacher team and they're really wonderful.
I would just be interested to hear at like this level what is.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Not that we don't love hearing from you.
Oh, no. No, I'd be happy to. Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out.
You can boot on the microphone.
Oh, yes. I do love the microphone. That is true. I don't know if this would be for next agenda, the one after, but, um, it's around, it's December already, which is insane. Either December or January, if we could just begin talking about our, um, our budget presentation meeting.
Yep.
Start that conversation a little early and make sure, I think, I think just getting some kind of subgroup together, do planning for that.
Yep, and also kind of touch base on. Touch base on the whole, um, town meeting.
Yep, I think either December or January, then maybe for the town meeting thing, maybe December is better because it gives us three solid months to talk about that.
Put the committee together.
Yep.
Yeah. Rebecca, I see your hand.
Um, yeah, I, I don't know if, if this would be a good time, but also, um, maybe have an idea of where our high school students are going, um, whether it's work, um, internship, um, college, post-secondary. Just a vague idea, maybe even, um, from the, if, if it's possible, from the new guidance counselor.
Kate, you want to take that one off?
Yep, we surveyed them. We just had a senior meeting recently and we surveyed them, but it's so early in the year for them to have any idea.
That's what I wondered.
Do you, do you, when would be a good time to do that report, Kate?
May, April, May.
Is that, Rebecca, does that sound reasonable? April?
Well, if that's what she can give, then yeah, we will have to accept that. That sounds fine. But yeah, I'd be interested in knowing where, where they're going to, especially on the heels of, um, the results of the, um, the recent survey that spoke to, um, um, young men not, not, um, pursuing secondary opportunities. So yeah, I'd be interested. Thank you, Kate.
And that is Monday, December 11th, yeah, at 6:30. Okay. And just very quickly, so Davis received a, and Davis received a request from Windsor on Air. And he sits on the Windsor on Air board, so I'm going to talk about this real quick. And, uh, uh, what they would like to do is, um, all Vermont cable access networks, um, would collectively like to, uh, request an appropriation of a million dollars of one-time funding to the Vermont Access Network. And, uh, and also they would like our support in enacting the Community Media Public Benefit Fund bill to assure long-term funding. So, um, then they have some rationale for what they do. I think we all know what they do for our, our community and their, their importance in our community. Our two communities, um, support them financially, uh, every, every single year. So it says, uh, the primary source of, okay, for decades, public educational and government channels have provided essential community services to Vermonters in all quarters of the state. These community media centers have been publicly funded by state sanctioned surcharges on cable TV subscriptions passed on to the AMOs by, uh, cable providers. This primary source of funding for community media services is now steadily declining due to consumer preference, preference shifts away from the cable delivery toward internet-based information and entertainment services. I mean, we get, we've all seen that happening already. Anyway. To continue providing adequate support to Vermont's public access stations, which will ensure that, uh, DEG services are broadly available everywhere in the state, we urge the Vermont Legislature to support both requests for one-time FY25 funding and the community, community media public benefit bill, which will create stable and permanent revenue source. So we were, this was brought to us by, uh, Windsor on Air general, and they would like us to, to endorse them as users and benef, both users and beneficiaries of Windsor on Air. Sorry?
Yeah, yeah, I can say it was, it was Paul, the director specifically, is responsible for this.
So, uh, there are two things. One is, would we like to sign this, uh, this letter? And if so, one of us needs to be authorized to sign it in support of Windsor on Air and all of the community media centers. But also do we want to include a letter from our organization or not? So does anybody have any objections to signing a petition in support of the local, local media, cable media?
I don't even know how you get on it, so.
Windsor on Air?
Yeah. What do you have to have to?
Well, you have to have, you can watch it on cable, but you can also, I watch it online.
Okay, because I don't have cable.
Neither do I.
No one has cable.
No one has-
That's why they're asking for this.
That's why they need this.
That's right.
Yeah.
So what they'd like to do is have, have funding that would allow them to be supported even when cable subscriptions are dropping.
And usually, I mean, if you had a-
I'll send you a link.
Yeah, there's a-
What's that?
I'm going to send you a link.
That's what you were saying several times and I didn't hear it.
To give folks just an example in this room, the way that it applies to what we do is that this meeting and every meeting that we have, and I believe every meeting that happens within our district and within our town, the way that people see that, unless there, I think that we post some of these ourselves, but a very large amount of people are able to access this information through Windsor on Air and other Vermont, what is it, Vermont Access Network, networks who all, you know, they, it, it's a larger thing. It's not just local.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's a network that, that resources local cable access stations. So it, yeah, it's a, it's a resource that we benefit from.
So does anybody object to our, oh, I heard a plea? Rebecca?
It's also a, a resource that speaks to not only this community, but all other communities literally around the world about what and who Windsor is. And so it's probably the only way people, besides a newsletter that comes out regularly through our town manager, but it's probably one of the only ways that people really can get to know what's going on in Windsor. So it's a very valuable resource.
So I'll take a motion to support the Vermont Access Network by, let's see. I guess the question is, okay, I'll take a motion to support the Vermont Access Access Network in fiscal year 2025 at the state level.
So.
Second. All those in favor of supporting the Vermont Access Network?
Aye.
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 They're all abstaining.
Good. And the second question is, who should fill out this form on behalf of our board?
I would like to nominate-
Davis?
He can't, he's on that board. I mean, he's abstaining.
Oh, he's on.
I'm a member of the Windsor on Air board, so, yeah. I mean, I don't personally benefit from it, but I think just like, yeah.
Can we nominate Hudson? I'm happy to do it, but I don't know legally if I can.
I don't think you can.
Okay.
You're trying, man.
There's my two ideas. I quit.
Why don't you do it?
I know, see Bill. Okay, I know.
I really don't mind doing it. I don't mind doing it, but-
It's a Google form.
It's a Google form. It's not a big deal.
Yeah.
But the third question would be, do we want to send a letter? And I don't want to send a letter. I would prefer not to send a letter. If it's-
Because it's going to, that makes sense.
I don't understand what the letter is.
We can add a personalized letter to let the legislators know why we support community media centers.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, you don't.
Yeah, you don't do that.
But we don't have to do that. It's just, you can add it if you want to.
I don't mind doing it if we think that's an important thing to do, but it's up to, like, I don't know, how much does the letter add to this?
That's the question. I mean, would a letter from, from our local school board be a-
Well, it can't hurt.
I mean, the letter could say, these guys are awesome. But they, I mean, or it could say, we've really been, I mean, we, we know that if more people watch our meetings on Windsor on Air than they do obviously coming to our meetings. So we have a lot to speak from if we want to. I just don't think it's appropriate for me to write that. But the line is, does not have a red asterisk next to it. And it says, add personalized comment to let legislators know why you support this. It's not, it doesn't have to be a whole formalized thing. I mean, legally, am I allowed to do that, send the letter on behalf of the board? I don't think so.
Yeah, I'd lean towards that.
I would happily nominate Rebecca with her eloquent hand.
Rebecca, would you accept such a nomination?
Can I work with Davis on this? If I can, I will.
It would, if I'm telling you, it will take you about 40 seconds to complete.
Okay.
That is the level of commitment.
I'm going to hold you to that. 40 seconds.
Just to reiterate too, I mean, we've already noted for this, the reason why we bring this before this board is the way the form is written is that you as an individual are sending in, but you have to verify that you have permission to speak on behalf of the body of the institution.
So I'll take a motion to appoint Rebecca Royzman as our signatory on this form.
So moved.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you. All those in favor of Rebecca filling out and sending the form, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I'm abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining.
I have Rebecca over.
Anybody against it? Okay, so I will, Rebecca, I'm sending you the link to the form right this second. Oh, you already sent it, Davis.
I sent the text, but I'll send the, you have the link, so you can-
Yeah, I listened to it.
Let's make sure everybody had a copy of the text.
And, okay. Brings us to, that's it, okay. All those in favor of entering executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter?
A contract.
A con, I'm sorry, thank you, a contract. That is 1 VSA, chapter 313. For the purpose of discussing a contract. All those in favor, oh, sorry, I'll take a motion to enter executive session.
So moved, Davis.
Thank you, Davis. Second, thank you, Megan. All those in favor of entering executive session? Yes, Misty?
I'm just curious, will you come back after executive session to vote? I'm really out of the loop, so, but I do want to kind of see how this weighs out. So I don't know if I should wait or log off.
Yeah, we will come back after, after executive session.
Great, thank you.
So, I'm going to record you.
When you record the vote to go in there, right?
Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
I'll shuffle out.